Welcome, everyone, to the May 20th, 2024 meeting of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners. And I have asked our former EMA Director, Sean Miller, who is now with Ohio EMA, to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Sean.
I'm Barb Lewis, Vice President, and to my left is fellow Commissioner Gary Merrill. I just changed Jeff Benton into Gary Merrill. Jeff Benton, our Administrator Tracy Davies, our Deputy Administrator Dawn Houston, and I do not see our other Deputy Administrator here. But I believe he is in the building, Eric Hostetler, and our clerks Jennifer and Brandy. We can begin.
Resolution number 24-401, in the matter of approving electronic record of proceedings from regular meeting held May 16th, 2024.
So moved.
Second discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 24-401, Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
We do not have any public comment today. That brings us to item number three, resolution number 24-402, in the matter of approving purchase orders that announce certificates and payments of warrants in batch number CM APR 0517 and memo transfers in batch number MT APR 0517.
So moved.
Second discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 24-402, Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Resolution number 24-403, in the matter of setting date, time, and place for the final hearing by the Commissioners for the proposed Griffith Number 391 Watershed Drainage Improvement.
So moved.
Second discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 24-403, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Resolution number 24-404, in the matter of approving a permit for use of Delaware County facilities.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Jane?
Jane?
Jane? Here we go.
There we are. Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jane Hawes, Director of Communications. We have before you a facilities permit from the Delaware Area Chamber of Commerce for their Leadership Delaware Program to use the large meeting room at the Bixby Campus, which has been very popular, a place for community groups to hold meetings, November 13th and 14th. And we recommend your approval.
Okay. Any further discussion? Vote, please.
Vote on motion 24-404, Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Resolution number 24-405, in the matter of honoring the Preservation Parks District of Delaware County on the occasion of its 50th anniversary.
So moved.
Second discussion.
I do believe we have some representatives.
There's going to be.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
Good morning. I just wanted to express gratitude.
Could you just say your name?
Yes, Mary Van Hatten, Preservation Parks of Delaware County.
Thank you.
Rich Nickam, Deputy Commissioner.
Glenn Marshall, I'm a Commissioner for Park District.
We're here to express our gratitude toward the First Commissioners in 1974, who requested to create a park district with a judgment entry back in '74. And today, or actually tomorrow is the actual date that we're celebrating 50 years as a park district. So we are grateful for that early support. We are grateful for the original budget for the first park district came from the county commissioners before we had a levy. So we really are appreciative of recognizing that early view and commitment toward protecting land and places for people to connect with nature. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been on the commission for about five or six years, and the amount of momentum the district has done in that time, and it's not because I'm on the board, it's coincidental. I remember my first meetings with Tom, our past director, trying to figure out the ways to put together the pieces for the Ohio Erie Trail, and then how boom, 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 we acquired the rail trussel. And it's just been amazing to see the growth in the district and the support of the community. Thank you for the support of the Commissioners and the administration for all you're doing to make it the best park district in the state. So we appreciate your support and excited to celebrate our 50th.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Glenn. Any other comments? Anybody else?
Quiet group this morning. I, you know, all three of you, thank you for coming. The Preservation Park's been a huge success story in Delaware County, you know, in those 50 years. And I think we've grown to over 2,400 acres now of land that's been preserved in parks. I know our residents really value the park system and support it financially, use it a lot. So it's really great that, you know, we can pause and celebrate 50 years. I did have a question for you. I know the last levy passed by a significant margin, which clearly shows the support. I'm just interested in what's next. I know you have plans for more acquisitions.
Yeah, we have a couple of really large future parks underway right now. One at McCammon Creek Park, it's about 230 acres north of the Polaris area. It's opening in phased pieces. We also have a 450-acre park in Trenton Township, just northeast of Sunbury, and that is also being phased out as we go to. That will have a lot of both natural and historical features that will really protect the historical and provide lots of trails throughout the county and connect to the Ohio Erie Trail in the future as well. So there'll be a lot of things to do at that park. We've got expansions happening throughout the county in existing parks. And those are really a couple of the biggest highlights on the horizon.
Gosh, I mean, this is, our residents really love.
Oh, they're always busy. Lots of activities. And we've expanded the programming at each of the parks. We happen to live next to the Shale Hollow, so we get to use that a lot. It's a beautiful park and just one of many in the county.
The trails are the number one reason people come to visit the parks, so we're very excited about adding miles and miles of trails. We also have purchased about 100 acres north of Camp Lazarus in that space there, and we'll have additional trails throughout that area, too, where there's so much growth happening around the county. So we're just pleased to partner with the county and everyone on what that smart development and resources for the community for the future are.
Is the Ohio Erie Trail completed now?
It's almost completed. There's still a missing bridge in Sunbury that's being worked on as we speak, but it is nearly complete now. And that stretches, for those of you who may not know, from Cincinnati to Cleveland.
That's great. And so happy to hear it's almost there.
Yeah, it's getting there.
It's come a long ways in the last 10 years.
And now we do have a proclamation, and maybe we get a picture.
Of course.
We should vote first.
We gotta vote?
Vote on motion.
We better vote.
Vote on motion 24-405, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
All right, we'll get a picture.
For item number seven, we're going to start with Alex McCarthy, our Director of County Office Homeland Security and Emergency Management.
Welcome, Alex.
Good morning, Commissioner Lewis and Commissioner Benton. Again, Alex McCarthy, Director of Homeland Security and Emergency Management here in Delaware County. When I last approached the Board about a month and a half ago, we had just gone through the March 14th tornadoes here in Delaware County. And I was coming before you to request a disaster declaration for Delaware County for that purpose. Our damage assessments locally identified over 250 homes that were impacted by the tornado and the associated winds. Of those homes and businesses, 30 were identified to have what we would consider major or destroyed levels of damage. That is buildings where you can't really live in there for the time being until either some repairs or significant repairs are made. One of the things our damage assessments take into consideration is what is the insurance status of these homeowners and business owners who have been impacted? Do they have insurance? Do they not have insurance? Do they have super high deductibles? And what we found from our initial assessment is that of 30 major destroyed homes, 11 were uninsured. Following the tornado, we worked with some of the community partners around Delaware County, folks like the Red Cross, United Way, Bridges Community Action Partnership, Veteran Services JFS, and many others, to form a long-term recovery committee to start to take a look at what some of the unmet needs are and what local resources we could kind of position to help those folks. Following that on Friday, March 22nd, we set up a multi-agency resource center in the Village of Galena for folks to be able to go to, to meet with some of these organizations and find out about some of the assistance that's available to those residents. The Village of Galena Hall was chosen for that because some of the most significant impacts were in a campground just outside or just within the village limits there. So it was awfully convenient for the bulk of those uninsured residents. Following that, about three weeks ago, FEMA was able to get a presidential declaration, excuse me, a presidential disaster declaration approved that included Delaware County. And with that, that opened up resources through both FEMA as well as the Small Business Administration to help disaster survivors across our county. So with that, what I'd like to do is invite a few of our partners in this process up. We have Sean Miller from Ohio Emergency Management Agency. I have Armando Navarro from FEMA, as well as Curvin Snyder from FEMA, and Lisa Dooly with the Small, excuse me, Sharon Dooly with the Small Business Administration, to kind of talk about some of their efforts and how their programming may be able to assist us here in Delaware County.
Thank you. Great.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sean Miller, Ohio EMA Regional Operations Chief. As Director McCarthy was talking about earlier, the effort as a result of the March 14th storms impacted numerous counties, including Delaware. Delaware is one of 11 presidentially declared counties from those storms. Of note, individual assistance, which was opened up as a result of that presidential disaster declaration, has been historically extremely rare for Delaware County. As a matter of fact, the last presidentially declared disaster in the county, if memory serves, is Hurricane Ike in 2008.
Oh, yeah.
And of note with that one, that was only for public assistance, so not for individual homeowners, renters, et cetera. That was more for damaged public buildings, public entities, things of that nature. But as a result of those 14 March storms, the local and state coordination started that evening. And the counties were very quick, especially Delaware County, very quick to submit the initial damage figures. And those were used to compile the overall state picture. And those eventually informed the request through Governor Mike DeWine, who submitted a request for a presidential disaster declaration on the 29th of March. That presidential disaster declaration was given by President Biden on the 2nd of May. And this is noteworthy because the objective of these federal funds, as mentioned by Ohio EMA Director Merrick, Sam Merrick, is to augment the local and the state efforts already underway immediately following those storms. And they're to assist local, as I mentioned, those local and state efforts for homeowners, renters, and businesses. So that's kind of the timeframe. The initial request went on on 29 March and was granted on the 2nd of May. And again, this is not a routine thing. So it is a very noteworthy occurrence for individual assistance. And the other noteworthy thing from these storms is that there were three fatalities, just two counties to the west, in Logan County. So very unfortunate. And it's been a quick recovery, though. I think that the counties have done a great job in leveraging those local resources. Alex talked about some of those earlier, like the Red Cross and others, to get folks back on their feet as quickly as possible. And then also with the federal assistance coming in behind that is a very good thing. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to our federal partners to talk about their efforts, their different programs, and the DRC, which is now open in Delaware County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Armando Navarro. I've been deployed here to serve as the Operations Division Supervisor in the county of Delaware, so I'm in close coordination with Ohio EMA and the Delaware County Emergency Manager. So my role here is to make sure we have effective and efficient communication between all federal emergency agencies and that our programs can roll out smoothly and have great coordination throughout the impacted areas. So we have a team here, folks, I'll let them come in. That would include our Individual Assistant Branch Director, who can answer any questions and provide some more information with regards to our individual household programs. With that, I'm going to start with our IGA, Intergovernmental Affairs Representative.
Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Curvin Snyder. I am an Intergovernmental Affairs Specialist. And what my job is to engage with local and county elected officials to open up a line of communication and offer myself as a liaison for any FEMA-related questions or inquiries you may have. I had the pleasure of meeting Jennifer last week, and she has my contact information. It's available, and I'll be happy to help in anything you may need.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Next, we have our partners from the Small Business Administration.
Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. My name is Sharon Dooly, an Intergovernmental Affairs Specialist for the U.S. Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. So we're going to say SBA Disaster. So when there's a presidential declaration, we come out in conjunction with FEMA and we offer assistance to homeowners, renters, businesses of all sizes and most nonprofits, including house of works that receive physical damage. And we offer low-interest, long-term loans to each one, just everybody in the community, really. I know we're U.S. Small Business Administration office, but we offer individual assistance to everyone in a disaster, and that's what we are here for. Like I say, they're low-term, low-interest, long-term, so 15 to 30 years to pay back, and no interest for the first 12 months, and no payment due until the 12th month after they receive their initial proceeds, because we're here for the long-term recovery. We know it's a disaster, so we don't expect anybody to get a loan and then pay back in 30 days. So we give them, you know, 12 months to repay it back. So like I say, we cover the gap between the uninsured and the underinsured, so they don't have to have insurance prior to the disaster. But if they are approved for a loan, they will need to get insurance, any type that's required. Homeowners, renters may qualify for up to $100,000 for their physical damage. That includes clothing, furniture, even a vehicle that was, you know, damaged due to these March 14th tornado. Homeowners may qualify for up to $500,000 to repair, replace any physical damage to their primary home. Then on top of that, homeowners may qualify for that $100,000 as well for their personal property. And then on top of that, homeowners may qualify for additional 20% of the verifiable loss for mitigation purposes. That's to build back better and stronger for any type of disaster that may be forthcoming, because we can't pick and choose what type of disaster comes. So it's to cover any type of disaster in the future. I'm here, all the EMAs, I met with them, they have my contact information. Plan to leave my information here, so if anybody needs to get in touch with me, they can. And we come out, my position is to come out and deliver the information on what we offer and whom we offer it to. But we do have customer service represented inside the DRC with FEMA to take the actual applications. And the deadline to apply for physical damage is July 1st. And then businesses, there's a second type of loan that a business may qualify for that do the physical and that have the economic injury disaster loan for businesses. That means they may not have received physical damage, but because of that storm, they lost business and they lost revenue. So that deadline for a business is February 3rd of 2025. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Then finally, we're going to have our Individual Assistant Branch Director.
All right. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Susan Jensen, and I am the I Branch Director for this operation. But I also am from the FEMA Regional Office in Chicago, and Ohio is one of the six states that we cover. So of course, we have a long-term continuing interest in how disasters are administered for this region, for the state of Ohio. First of all, I want to say that we are getting a good number of registrations from Delaware County. It's important, first of all, that people do register for our programs. That's how they get assistance. Even if they have insurance, now that will delay any FEMA assistance that they get or that they may be eligible for, but it's the first step in a process. As was mentioned by SBA, people have until July 1st in order to register to get assistance. That doesn't mean that they can't continue to work with FEMA after they've registered well into, you know, the coming year. We continue to accept appeals, documentation, et cetera. Now, as I said, DRC, a Disaster Recovery Center, is opening today at noon in Sunbury at the Sunbury United Methodist Church, which is 100 West Cherry Street. People do not need to go to a DRC to register, although that's certainly one way that they can. We've widely publicized the 800 number, which is 800-621-FEMA, 3364. Or they can register online, and a good number of people are doing that. They're going onto disasterscience.gov, and they are completing their information there. As far as Delaware County in particular is concerned, we've received 151 registrations right now. And that is not just for tornado damage, but for straight-line winds and, you know, wind-driven rain, things like that. So we're getting registrations from outside the path of the tornado. These people can still be eligible as long as they have damage from that time period, March 14th, which is when the storms are, or were, I should say. Right now, FEMA has assisted with almost $9,000. That being said, that number will go up when people turn in their insurance paperwork. We need to see a settlement from their insurance company before we will send an inspector out to look at their damage. Right now, in this county, there are 86 families waiting for insurance settlements or waiting to turn their paperwork in. So that is a message that we really want to emphasize, that that assistance from FEMA may be there, whether they have insurance or not. But we need to see documentation of what they actually received from their insurance company when that is completed. At that point, an inspector will come out and look at their damage. And as I said, that may begin, from a FEMA perspective, the assistance that they're eligible for. Two important things to remember. Right now, for people who have insurance or for people who haven't received displacement assistance, people need to, or they won't be getting any rental assistance right now. What they need to do, especially if they have displacement assistance, which is a one-time payment for that gap between, you know, when they're displaced and when it was declared, or currently, they can call the 800 number and say, "My family needs rental assistance." We want people to be in a place where they can actually rent or they can live temporarily for that rental assistance to really be effective, because they can be recertified for up to 18 months, up to 18 months, not necessarily 18 months, if they have that rental assistance, so that they can make their repairs on their homes. We understand that it's not an immediate type of thing to rebuild or repair a home, especially one that's been heavily damaged by a tornado. And so that rental assistance can help provide the time that they need in order to make those repairs. I also was really, really happy to hear that there's a recovery group here. That's a critical piece of how FEMA continues to assist and the community continues to assist people to recover. We have voluntary agency liaisons who work for FEMA and partner with the state voluntary agency liaison to talk to county long-term recovery groups. They can help connect those local recovery groups with national resources. FEMA has a very strong relationship with the national voluntary organizations active in disaster. The Vows can help liaise with those organizations, bring additional resources in. They can help with technical assistance for your recovery groups, and they can also provide training about the FEMA process and the FEMA programs. Again, just to emphasize, July 1st is the application deadline. We'll get that information out there. And that concludes my comments. Ending any questions?
I just wondered what the phone number is again, if you could repeat that, that 800 number.
1-800-621-FEMA, or 3362, 3362.
Okay. Commissioner, I mean.
Well, thank you all for coming and continuing to publicize the availability of help. Sean, great to see you again. Welcome back. And, you know, locally, we did, our local offices, agencies, villages did an outstanding job. The community really responded well, and it's great to see that at the state and federal level, there's also a very quick response and available resources to help in a lot of different ways. So thank you for coming and helping to publicize that.
Thank you so much. What is the recovery group? Could you tell me a little bit more about what and who comprises the recovery group?
Yeah, so again, we started meeting the Monday after the tornado. Some of our key players have been the Red Cross, the United Way, Bridges Community Action Partnership, Veteran Services, Job and Family Services. We had both Ohio Volunteer Organizations Active in Disaster involved in our recovery committee, Ohio Job and Family Services, and we had a few others who would kind of come and go depending on availability during the meeting date and time.
Oh, great.
So.
Oh, great. That's a super group.
Absolutely.
Yeah, wonderful. Thank you, Alex, for all you've done. Our county EMA has done a terrific job, and for Ohio EMA assistance, Sean, and also FEMA. I mean, FEMA, thank you so much. That's great. And our, Eric and Jane, I know our communications department is working closely with Alex and getting out the word to people.
They're very much appreciated.
So thank you. Thank you very much for coming this morning.
All right, that brings us to item number eight, resolution number 24-406, in the matter of proclaiming the week of May 19th through 24th, 2024, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Delaware County.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Good morning. Jeremy Miller, Assistant Chief, Delaware County EMS. Thank you for your recognizing Delaware County EMS here as we celebrate National EMS Week. This year's theme is honoring the past and forging the future. This invites us to reflect on our incredible journey of EMS and look ahead with optimism and determination. As we gather here, I'm filled with immense pride and gratitude for the extraordinary commitment, skill, and compassion that each of our members of EMS team brings to work every day. Our journey is marked by countless acts of heroism and dedication. It's only fitting that we take a moment to honor our past while we chart a course for an even brighter future. The history of EMS is a story of evolution, innovation, and unwavering dedication. From the early days of rudimentary first aid and basic transport to today's sophisticated pre-hospital care, our field is continuously advancing to meet the growing needs of our communities. We've seen the introduction of advanced life support techniques, the integration of cutting-edge technology, and the establishment of protocols that save lives. Three years ago, we were honored as Ohio's EMS Service of the Year. The next year, we were honored at the national level for the same recognition. Actually, that year, we won two national awards. And it'd be easy for us to become complacent, but we did not. In 2023, we continue to receive recognition both at the state and national level. This year, we're especially proud to celebrate yet again a remarkable achievement that exemplifies our commitment to excellence. Our team has been honored with the Mission Lifeline Gold Award with Target Heart Attack Recognition by the American Heart Association. This prestigious award represents the highest level of recognition, highlighting our unwavering dedication and improvement to heart attack cares and outcomes. It's the testament of hard work, expertise, and relentless pursuit of excellence by every member of our team. Receiving this award from the V Global Leader in Heart Care is not just an honor, but it's a milestone that reflects the strides that we have made in providing exceptional care, and it underscores the commitment to adopting best practices, continuous education, and leveraging advanced technologies to ensure whatever we deliver will deliver at the best possible outcome. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Captain Jared Toops has been selected amongst 10,000 people as the EMS Provider of the Year this year for Ohio, whereas in two days, we'll go down to the Department of Transportation and celebrate that. to the Department of Transportation and celebrate that achievement. Sorry to put you on the spot, Captain Toops. Stop being so good, and you won't have to be. As we forge forward into the future, let us carry the lessons of our past. Let us remember the pioneers who laid down the foundation of modern EMS, the mentors that guided us, the expertise that shaped our journeys. Let us honor their legacy by continuing to innovate, to push boundaries, and to strive for excellence in all that we do. The future of EMS holds tremendous promise. With advances in medical technology, telemedicine, and data analytics, we're poised to enhance our capabilities to improve patient care even further. Our commitment to professional development, community education, and collaboration with other healthcare providers will be the key in navigating the challenges and opportunities that lie ahead. In closing, and forgive me, I'd like to look at my team to do this. I'd like to express my deepest gratitude to each of you as a member of our EMS family. Your dedication, compassion, and resilience are the bedrock of our success. Together, we can achieve great things, and together, we'll continue to make a profound impact on the lives of those that we serve. So thank you. In closing, I want to express my deepest gratitude for your support, Commissioners, and for every member of the EMS family, including Anna. Together, we'll achieve great things and continue to make a profound impact. Thank you, and I appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you.
Yeah. Again, Jeremy, thank you. The whole team. I know Jeff's not here, that's more official, the director. But again, great, great work. We are so proud of our EMS team and the work they do, and lives they save. So again, it's great to pause and reflect on that and recognize you.
Absolutely. And to all those EMS personnel too, throughout the county, and you work, you are working so well together through the Prehospital Care Board, which, as you mentioned, is three years, three years now.
Yeah.
Three years old. Gosh. That's great. Our EMS system here in Delaware County is the best, and it's just wonderful what lives are saved. And as you go about your work, so to all those in EMS in Delaware County. We pledge our support today and in the future. So thank you. We do have a proclamation if we could.
Can we vote?
We got to vote.
Oh, a vote, okay.
Can't take pictures.
I'm awfully excited on these proclaims.
Vote on Motion 24-406. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Somehow Eric fits you all. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. You're a lucky man.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine, Resolution Number 24-407, in the matter of approving a partial release and vacation of a sanitary sewer easement for Catherine Benakazar, Genoa Township, Delaware County, Ohio. Official Record 759, Page 328.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Deputy Director Eric McPeak with the Regional Sewer District. His first item is a partial release of an easement that we've had for a while. The sewer got relocated once the development happened to a different portion of the property, so we have what we need and would like to vacate the easement.
Okay. This has been a long time coming.
From my understanding, yes.
Yes, it has. Yeah. Thank you. Vote?
Vote on Motion 24-407. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution Number 24-408, in the matter of approving change order number two to the agreement between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners and Ohio Water Development Authority for the OECC Headworks and Aeration Upgrades Project.
So moved.
Second discussion.
So this is the second no-cost change order for us. We have a loan through OWDA, and we're basically moving, this time the sum of $331,000 in owner's contingency dollars to a different line item to spread throughout the rest of the work schedule. That's what this is for. So it's a zero change. We budgeted for an owner's contingency. Basically, we found some cost efficiencies, and we have two plants basically on one property that are, one from the '70s and the '90s, that we get some surprises every once in a while during construction. So that's what all this covers.
Yeah. How is the big project coming along? I know this is a huge project. How's it coming?
Yeah, this is a great, great time right now. We're getting ready to get, starting up the new portions that we've been constructing. June 6th is the big day. We're about 60% complete on the project. So this will be a nice couple of big months for us. We're going to use new infrastructure, learn how to run the plant in this new way. So we're really excited. Once we get that out of the way, we can concentrate on focusing on the rest of it. We still have a year or two left to complete everything, but it's going very well so far.
That's great.
Thanks for your work on that.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Vote, please.
Vote on Motion 24-408. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution Number 24-409, in the matter of approving an advance of funds and supplemental appropriations for the Engineers' Office.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. Lee Bodnar with the Engineers' Office. This advancement and supplemental will provide the payment mechanisms necessary for the Warrensburg Bridge Rehabilitation Project and for the roundabout that was completed last year at Old Sawmill Road and Presidential Parkway. If you remember, that was a good partnership between Liberty Township, the City of Powell, and the county. And we would humbly ask for your approval.
Discussion. Vote, please.
Vote on Motion 24-409. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution Number 24-410, in the matter of approving the Platts of Subdivision for Berlin's Bluff Section 1, Berlin Bluff Section 2, Berlin Farms West Section 2, and Liberty Grand District Section 10.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Yes, Commissioners, for your consideration, Berlin Bluffs 1 and 2 total 73 lots located north off of Cheshire Road, just east of Pyatt Road in Berlin Township. Berlin Farms is 55 lots located on the north side of Berlin Station Road in Berlin Township. And Liberty Grand, Section 10, totals 41 lots located east of Stites Road and north of Homewood. These Platts have all been reviewed by the Necessary and Required Agencies, and we would recommend your approval.
Please.
Vote on Motion 24-410. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution Number 24-411, in the matter of approving Amendment Number 1 to the Professional Services Agreement for Dell CR10-05.60, South Old State and Hollenbeck Intersection Improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Yes, Commissioners, again for your consideration, this is for the engineering design work associated with the installation of a signalization and turning lanes located at the intersection of South Old State and Hollenbeck Road. It is scheduled for 2006 construction.
2006, Lee?
2026.
26.
That would be better, wouldn't it? I got behind there a little bit.
Yeah, a couple decades. You were close.
Okay. Vote, please.
Vote on Motion 24-411. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution Number 24-412, in the matter of approving right-of-work permit summary sheet.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Yes, you are a numbers guy, I know. This is for six standard utility right-of-way permits with nothing out of the ordinary to report.
A vote, please.
Vote on Motion 24-412. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution Number 24-413, in the matter of approving plan specifications, estimate, and setting the bid date for the project known as Dell CR72-2.50, Cheshire Road.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Yes, Commissioners, again for your consideration, this project will widen Cheshire Road to three lanes between South Old State and Pyatt Road. We will receive $500,000 from OPWC towards this project, and construction is scheduled to begin this year after utility relocations are completed. So that's kind of a moving target, Dana. Hopefully sooner rather than later. The bid date is scheduled for June 18th at 10:00 a.m.
Okay. Vote, please.
Vote on Motion 24-413. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution Number 24-414, in the matter of releasing and returning the financial warranty for Berlin Farms West.
So moved.
Second.
Lastly, for your consideration, this resolution returns $352,000 in warranty to MI Homes for the Berlin Farms, which is located on the north side of Berlin Station Road in Berlin Township. They've completed their obligation for the roadway improvements to Berlin Station Road. And we would ask for your approval.
All right. Vote, please.
Vote on Motion 24-414. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Resolution Number 24-415, in the matter of authorizing the submitting of an application for the Ohio Ambulance Impact Industry Program Grant for the Emergency Medical Services Department.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Morning, Commissioners. Justin Navi, Director of Finance. This would allow county administration to apply for the ambulance program grant on behalf of the EMS Department.
Okay. Discussion and vote.
Vote on Motion 24-415. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is a few minutes past 10 o'clock, so we're going to note the start of our public key.
Let me, let's take a five-minute recess, and then we will begin at 10:20.
10:20.
Thank you.